What's your view at like four?
All right, we'll call this meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Attendance?
Attendance noted.
Awesome. All right, is there a motion to approve the meetings of the regular Planning Commission meeting of April 24th, 2017?
So moved.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right, so this is an opportunity for citizens to address the commission on items that are not on the agenda. So if anybody would like to speak to anything that's not currently on the agenda, now's your time to come up. Anyone? Anyone? Okay. So we'll get right to our first item of business then. This is a public hearing to consider a request for a conditional use permit amendment and variances to allow an expanded outdoor recreational facility at the Academy of Holy Angels. The proposal includes a synthetic turf playing surface, field lighting, and an additional inflatable dome to be used seasonally. Staff?
Thank you, Chair Vries-Daniels and Commissioners. The Academy of Holy Angels is proposing to expand and upgrade their outdoor recreational facilities. They propose to convert the current grass field in the southwest corner of their campus to a synthetic turf playing surface and to add outdoor field lighting. They also propose a second inflatable dome to be used seasonally in conjunction with the existing stardome, which has been in use since 1996. The stated purpose for these changes is to optimize usage of the southwest field and provide for year-round practice opportunities. Heavy usage of the current grass field as well as inclement weather has led to a damaged and unsafe playing surface. Holy Angels states that an all-weather playing surface would allow the field to be used for practice space more frequently and to provide a better experience for student athletes. Holy Angels states that the field would be used in the same manner as the existing grass field is used, primarily consisting of practices for football, soccer, lacrosse, baseball, softball, and track, as well as hosting some of the games for the lower-level teams. Outdoor field lighting would allow the field to be used later into the evenings, and the addition of a second inflatable dome over the winter months would allow the facility to be used year-round. Hours of use for both the field lighting and the dome would be limited to 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. throughout the year. Like, like most schools and religious institutions in Richfield, Holy Angels' property is zoned single-family residential. Outdoor recreational facilities are conditionally permitted uses subject to the following provisions: That outdoor recreational facilities designed for group activities shall be set back at least forty feet from any lot line; that buffering be provided to mitigate noise and adverse visual impacts on adjacent properties; and that lighted playing fields shall only be permitted upon demonstration that off-site impacts can be substantially mitigated. The turf field is proposed to be set back twenty-five feet from the south property line. Although it would occupy a similar footprint to the existing grass field, a variance is required due to the intensification of the use. Buffering is provided to mitigate visual impacts as much as is practicable. The existing trees along the west property line, currently a lot of deciduous trees, will be replaced with coniferous trees to provide, to provide that continuous screening. Trees along the south property line will mostly be retained with, with a small exception along the Pillsbury Avenue dead end. Some of that screening will be replaced with new fir trees. Given that the, given that the synthetic turf field would replace an existing grass field, noise levels are expected to remain largely consistent with the existing conditions. The primary change would be in the frequency and the duration of use of the field. The current grass field at Holy Angels does not have lighting and is therefore limited in its hours of use. Holy Angels is proposing to add six eighty-foot-tall light poles to eliminate the, the playing field. A survey of city parks found that light pole heights range from sixty to seventy feet, and there are light poles of seventy and eighty feet at the Richfield High School ballfields. Holy Angels' existing, their existing synthetic turf field has light poles of this height range as well. Along the south side of the field, three of those light poles would be set back just seventeen feet from the property line, and that's a, that's a correction from the figure in your report. It said fifteen feet, but that those light poles will actually be set back approximately seventeen or eighteen feet from the property line. It's a little bit further away. While the zoning code sets, the zoning code sets maximum heights for light poles in parking lots and in landscaped areas. It doesn't specify a maximum height for things like city parks or public or private school faci, school athletic facilities. Setbacks are not specified either for light poles. A comparable regulation does exist for antenna towers. Towers in these districts are limited to seventy-five feet in height and are required to be set back twice the height of the pole from the nearest residential structure. So while staff look to that regulation for guidance, it only applies to antenna towers. It doesn't actually apply to these poles. So just wanted to make that clear. So variances, variances are requested to increase the pole height to eighty feet. And aside, aside from those deviations, the proposed lighting plan does meet code requirements that limit glare and light spill onto neighboring properties. The, all of the light levels along that south property line are at or under what our minimum foot candle measurement is at the property line. In, in approving variances, there are some findings that are necessary. So I'll read through just a couple of those. That there are practical difficulties that, that prevent the property owner from using the property in a reasonable manner. And I'd like to just provide the justification for, for the dome height. Strict enforcement of this requirement would cause a practical difficulty. The ordinance as written generally, the, the single-family zoning ordinance as written generally does not consider large campus developments that contain multiple buildings, multiple accessory buildings such as Holy Angels or Richfield High School, despite that all of those properties are zoned single-family residential. The maximum height for principal buildings in that district is seventy-five feet. If these domes were considered to be principal buildings rather than accessory, it would actually conform to all height and setback requirements. That is, if that, if that was a separate property and they wanted to build a school building there at this height, it would actually meet our setback in height requirements. Second criteria is that there are unusual or unique circumstances that apply to the property which were not created by the applicant and do not generally apply to other properties in the same zoning district or vicinity. Like, like most schools and religious institutions in Richfield, Holy Angels' property is zoned single-family residential. However, if this campus was being proposed today in its entirety, it would likely, you'd likely be looking at reviewing it as a planned unit development rather than, you know, how, basically coming back piece by piece for, for these approvals. Planned unit developments, as you know, allow for greater flexibility in the application of the zoning code. And this, this circumstance is unique to the large, large campus developments such as this, and it does not generally apply to other, to other properties in the same single-family residential zone or vicinity. And then lastly, another, the third criteria for approving a variance is that it would not alter the character of the neighborhood or locality. And the, the, the addition of a second inflatable dome and field lighting, it would, it would represent a significant change from the current conditions. Changes of this magnitude are, are a question of community character, and some of the factors to be considered in that decision are qualitative rather than quantitative. Whether or not these changes are appropriate for the neighborhood is a decision that should be made by the appointed and elected leaders of the community rather than made by city staff. In, in order to approve the proposal, the city council must find, or the, the Planning Commission and the city council must find that adequate provisions have been made to protect the public health, health, safety, and welfare. Just a look, for a, a little look ahead at the timeline for this project. It would move on to the city council on June 13th for final, for final review. That meeting would not be a public hearing, but that, the city council would make a decision on June 13th. And then Holy Angels has shared their project timeline as well. They're looking to install the synthetic, if approved, they're looking to install the synthetic turf field as soon as possible, as well as some of the infrastructure items for the dome this year. The, the dome would not actually be installed until November 2018. Staff received email correspondence from one resident nearby on Wentworth Avenue requesting some more information about possible impacts, including light, noise, and parking. Holy Angels held an open house meeting with area residents on last Thursday. Feedback from that meeting was obviously not yet available when this report was put together, but I did have the opportunity to attend that meeting, just to listen in. About eighteen to twenty residents attended. Holy Angels shared their plans and then took questions and, and met with folks individually, you know, to, to see how their concerns could be addressed. Concerns included, you know, visual impacts, impacts on property values. There were some questions about gates on the, so the, they're proposing to fence in the, the field and second dome, and so there were some questions about neighborhood access to the property, if there would be gates and things like that. And I, I think we'll hear some of the, the same questions tonight at the public hearing. So with that, the staff report is complete. Representatives from Holy Angels are here. Craig Larson from Opus, and then Scott Daly from Holy Angels, as well as Tom Shipley is here as well. So that concludes the staff report, and staff will stand for any questions as well.
Thank you. So before we open the public hearing, does anyone on the commission have any questions for staff? I do have a question about the lighting. So you said the lighting does fit in our current regulations for lumens. Can you expand upon that at all? How do you test that? You know, since they're not up and they're higher than they normally would be?
Sure. So they've provided a photometric lighting plan. Can find, I can find out what page of your report that's on. There's actually, there's actually several pages of it, but we'll get you the right one. Yeah, so beginning on page twenty-three, it shows a photometric lighting plan, which shows the light level, and that's in foot candles as the measure of, as the measure of light. And page twenty-five actually go, it drills down specifically to the light levels at the property line, and our standard is one foot candle is the, is the maximum permitted to fall at the property line or on a public street or anything like that. And so if you look at page twenty-five, if you can...
Maybe our AV tech can put that up on the screen for us as well.
So on that sheet, they've provided the, the photometric lighting plan, and it does show that all of those lighting levels across the south property line where it's directly adjacent to residential properties do meet that standard of one foot candle or less. In, in discussing the, the height of those poles, Holy Angels and their lighting consultant demonstrated that, basically that, that eighty-foot-tall, we, staff asked, are sixty-foot, is sixty-foot possible? Is seventy, is seventy-foot possible? And Holy Angels and their lighting designer demonstrated that the taller pole actually helps you get that downward angle to reduce the light spill by aiming the lights, you know, at a more vertical angle, a lower pole, and your lights are shot more horizontal, which especially with the light poles on the north side of the field shining to the south would have been at a more horizontal angle, providing more glare. That was, that was their stated case for the eighty-foot poles, is that it would actually reduce the glare and help them meet these requirements.
So when the dome is on, is up, are those lights shining into the dome, or are there different lights inside the dome? Because the dome doesn't take up the whole space, correct?
That's correct. The dome is quite a bit smaller than the entire synthetic turf field. My understanding is that when the dome is up for, from approximately November 1st to May 1st, these exterior lights are not used. There's separate lighting inside the dome, but I will let Holy Angels clarify that. But that, that was our understanding, is that the exterior lights aren't used. There would be smaller, you know, security lighting around the entrances and things like that of the dome.
So it's really just during those summer hours?
Correct. During, yeah. May 1st to November 1st would be the months when the dome is down and the, and the field would be used.
Okay. And then I, one more question. So you said due to noise that, that wouldn't be changed much, but with the addition of lights, won't they be open more hours? And so would the noise?
Right. I think what I was trying to communicate with there was that the, the noise levels wouldn't increase more.
But the time?
It's, yeah. It with, it's that the field would be used more months out of the year and more hours out of the day, in that it could be presumably be used until 10:00 p.m., you know, three hundred and sixty-five days a year.
I do have a question for the developer then. Will the lights be on a timer, or will they only be on if there's an event?
They'll be on a timer that can be programmed, so I would assume the standard operation would be to set it up so they would automatically go off at ten o'clock. But if there's a, a night when there's no use, it can be programmed to just not even come on that evening.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions before we open? All right. So this is a public hearing, so you can come up and speak. We do ask that you sign in and state your name and your address. And then each person will get three minutes about to speak, and I'll kind of give you a little gesture when your time's up. But please do come up and speak and tell us what your thoughts are. If you have questions, we can try to answer them during this timeframe too.
Ready to begin then?
Yes, yes.
My name's Craig Larson. I am a longtime member of the Holy Angels Facility Committee and a parent of two alums, and I've been assisting the school with this project. I just wanted to emphasize a few things. I don't want to repeat the points that Matt's already made in the report. But, but Holy Angels has been a longtime member of the Richfield community and strives to be a good neighbor. We're mindful of the challenges that bringing a large number of teenage youth and other visitors onto our campus can present, and we do strive to mitigate that as, as well as possible. The school leadership understands that, that various aspects of this project are of concern for some of the immediate residential neighbors, and, and some of them do feel that the improvements that we propose would compromise their rights to fully use and enjoy their property. And, and we respect that. However, we feel that, you know, being limited in the improvements that the school can, can put in place similarly impacts the school's right to enjoy the, the use of, of our property. So with that in mind, we did hold the open house that Matt mentioned and, and shared details. Hopefully, we made, you know, a, a fair number of the neighbors more comfortable with our, our plans. The reasons why this is important for the school, you know, as, as the number of participants in competitive sports and other activities grows, we're short on space to accommodate them. We've been grateful for the opportunity to use the city parks, but they suffer from some of the same problems of the overuse of the fields and wet weather conditions, and they just assume that we not use the fields in those, in those situations. So it really does limit our opportunities. Having the artificial turf field would, would allow us to have a, a much longer time when we can make use of that outdoor field space, as well as the lights would allow us to go, you know, into the early part of the evening. The other thing we use the field and that we use the dome for are renters. That, that revenue source is very important to the school. It's a very competitive market with the, the private schools in the area, and we need all that revenue we can get to help defray the operating costs of the school, help keep tuitions down, and, and stay competitive. I've got a variety of people from Holy Angels here tonight, so as we get into discussion and questions, we can, we can bring whichever of them that might be appropriate to handle the question.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Mr. Larson?
Mr. Larson?
It's Craig, right?
Could you state your address for the record?
Yes, my address is 7632 West 85th Street in Bloomington.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Susan Tribblehorn, and I am the property owner of two of the apartment buildings on Pleasant, 6729 Pleasant and 6737 Pleasant. I have numerous concerns. First of all, questioning why I didn't, we were not notified of the May 18th meeting since we are on Pleasant Avenue and my property abuts the southwestern corner of Holy Angels. Just curious as to why we weren't notified of the May 18th meeting? All right. I have several things that I need to point out. First of all, Holy Angels is already violating the Richfield noise ordinance. I have residents that advise me that those lights are on until 11:00, 11:30 at night. And it's also my understanding, if you're proposing a 6:00 a.m. start, we have to go through this with our garbage company all the time, reminding them that the City of Richfield noise ordinance is, starts at 7:00 a.m. and they're picking up at 5:00 or 6:00 a.m. So they're, I keep threatening them that I'm going to go to the city and file a complaint against them. Additional points, let's see. What are you going to do? We already have problems with people that are going to Holy Angels and going to the games and using the dome. Our parking on our precious, limited parking street of Pleasant, right across from the railroad track. Our residents, we, when we have residents that have more than one car, they are required to park on Pleasant Avenue. And as you know, Pleasant Avenue, you can only park on one side of the street where our residents are supposed to park. Another issue is, these people that are using the dome in Holy Angels are already using our parking lots. We have, for the building 6724, getting them mixed up, but we have three entrances, and these people are already using our entrances for our parking lots to turn around from parking because it's only one way and it's a dead end, so they can't back up down the street, so they go through our parking lots. Last year, we had a garage door that was bashed in from someone driving through the parking lot. Okay? Other problems are, what are you going to do with this?
Yes, you have one minute remaining.
Oh, I don't have enough time. Snow removal. Are we going to have to move the snow from the parking lots onto the railroad tracks? What are we going to do with the snow? Environmental for the northwest corner that you're talking about where you're laying that patio or whatever? We asked for our grassy area in our parking lot to be converted to cement, and we were denied by the city because of environmental purposes. Can't take that grassy area. It's already zoned as grass, grass. Wondering why it would be okay for Holy Angels to take this whole area and cement it out? Let's see. Construction workers, I can guarantee you that they're going to be using our parking lots, our entrances, our access. How else are they going to get through to these areas? The, we have residents that are, I already have trouble sometimes attracting residents because of the railroad, and they say, oh, that noise. Well, like, it doesn't run that often. Going to have even more problems attracting residents. Let's see.
All right, you're, sorry, your three minutes are up, but thank you for coming.
My name is Sharon Miller. I live in the house which is directly across the middle of where you are proposing to put the next dome.
Your address for the record?
Pardon me?
Your, what is your address?
Oh, 6712 Pleasant Avenue South.
Thank you.
I have lived there for about seventy years. My folks built the house there in 1948. We moved in 49. When my father passed away, my husband and I were just getting married, and we bought the house from my mother and have lived there for the past fifty-five years. He just passed away about this last year, several, about, about one year ago right now. So my house is the one, if you look at it, that is now up for sale. This is not good news for me. I'm sure you know that most people doing, it's hard enough to sell a house with a railroad track across the street, let alone knowing you're going to have a mega dome with mega lights in it, directly across from your house. My house has a great big beautiful window in the front. We, we love the view we get. The, the people that we get looking at our house right now, there's a sign out in front. It's, there are people that like the view. It's a, it's a wonderful spot, and we have a beautiful home, and I, I wish I didn't have to move, but I do. But I'm, I don't think I'm going to get the, the money out of it that I should, because there are very few people that want to live across the street from a mega dome with mega lights. And this is very disappointing to me. I think, I know Holy Angels would like to have another dome. I went through, and my husband and many other people in our area, we tried to fight the last dome. I think Holy Angels is extremely lucky to have the dome they have now, and I see no reason why we have to be put through fighting another one. I mean, there was a, I, God help me, I, I never ever thought I would have to fight the dome, Holy Angels, and the City of Richfield again. I, I hope it doesn't go through. There is some difference, however. I mean, we, we have decided that the dome over next, we already have one dome. When I, when there's soccer games in that dome now, at, in the evening, we hear smack like that about every thirty seconds when it hits the wall. We don't need another one across the street that's doing that. And it does go mostly, it'll very often go after ten o'clock. I love, I love seeing the kids out there playing. I love seeing all the activity. Today, there were three different groups of athletes playing out there just as I was coming here. There was the baseball game, and then there were some other, further on down, two more. We love that, and we, we really appreciate all that Holy Angels, they have updated their everything. It's, it's a great school, I know, but I think this is a little overkill, putting the residents that are here through this again. And I know the people that are on the south side, they're going to be at least as close as I am, and they don't want their homes devalued either. I mean, this is very...
Your three minutes are up. Thank you for coming.
And I, I just wanted to say that I think it's time for the City of Richfield and Holy Angels to give us a break. I mean, we would like to continue living in this area in peace. We don't need a double whammy. We've already had one that's up there now, the dome that's there now. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Can you state your name and your address, please?
Oh, I'm Laura Rand. I live at 6729 East, or just Pleasant Avenue. I rent from Susan and Byron.
Thank you.
So this is for my bedroom from today, from the games that are going on today, which is tolerable. However, when they build it right next to my bedroom, that's not going to be... That's not going to be tolerable. Even now, the lights that exist at the dome that's already built, 9:00 p.m., it's not fully dark yet, but my room is bright. So I'm just, I think the make, biggest issue I have with it is that most of the students that attend Academy of Holy Angels, and dare I say, most people who work there and who have been planning this, don't, don't live in Richfield, and certainly don't live around the field where you plan to build. So if you were going to have the same thing built right in your backyard, I'm sure you'd be highly disappointed. Just because I don't go to Academy of Holy Angels doesn't mean I don't appreciate the sports and the things that you guys value. I'm a student myself. I'm a student myself in my graduate program. So, six AM, whatever kind of shenanigans you guys are going to have go on, it's not going to work for me. Not to mention, for the City of Richfield as a whole, it's one of the centrally most located locations in the Twin Cities and a lot of young families, people my age and my husband's age are moving to Richfield, just starting out or just have kids. And so, yes, I see that Richfield sees an opportunity in this to earn money as your taxes will increase and you'll pay to the City of Richfield for having built this space. But there's also the investment of the people who are coming and buying houses now in Richfield and who are going to make Richfield a lovely place that it already is. So, there's two separate issues. The issue that I already deal with, the noise and the lights and the people walking and parking in front of my house and on my grass that I help maintain. And then the issue of ruining a space that I see that families use in the summer. Just this past Easter Sunday, people went to church and afterwards they flew their kites in the grass. There was probably thirty kids, it was great. And then in the summertime, when the field is not in use or reserved for baseball games, there is a Middle Eastern population around Richfield that comes and plays cricket together. So, it's a really nice area the way that it is and as someone who lives right there, I can say, as far away as your dome already exists, you're already intruding on my personal space. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
Good evening, my name is Patty Lundquist. I live at sixty-seven twenty-nine Pleasant Avenue, which is directly in the southwest corner, the property adjacent to the field. First of all, I'd like to say I have nothing against kids or sports. I enjoy it immensely. But, I feel at this point, we're already tolerating the noise that's coming off this field. And to propose an opening time at six AM is just completely ludicrous. Everyone around there, especially in my building, we work. And some of us work two jobs and some of us would like a little peace and quiet on the weekends. I don't see how having a game and whistles blowing and boom boxes playing and crowds cheering will lend to any form of peace and quiet in our neighborhood. We also have the issue of parking. Just as I was leaving for the meeting, we live on a one-way dead-end street. Just as I was pulling around the building, I saw out of my rearview mirror a car approaching behind me and as soon as I was out of the way, they pulled into the spot, got their chairs out and proceeded to walk to the field. And I realize it's a public street, but there's very limited parking for the residents and their guests. If you add an additional dome, there will be constant parking issues and constant noise going on. I just can't even imagine listening to that. We listen to it as it is up until eleven o'clock at night sometimes on the weekends, which I do believe is outside of the city ordinance, if I'm not mistaken. And six AM is before the city ordinance. And there is no amount of trees or fences that you can propose to put up that will stop the noise. That's my biggest issue out of this whole thing and I also feel it'll devalue properties. We also already have a train track in front of us. So, you know, I feel like this is just a money grab from Holy Angels and maybe they should look at other ways of raising funds, like having fundraisers. I'm sure there's a lot of people in the community that would support that kind of activity to help the school. And that's what I have to say.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
Hi, my name is Titania Carkini, this is my husband.
I'm Dan Carkini, we live at sixty-seven thirty-four Pleasant Avenue, on the southwest corner of the proposed dome.
Can you just make sure that you're speaking to the mic, there are people at home watching, I just want to make sure everyone can hear you.
Yeah, so we live on the southwest corner of the proposed dome and we're just here to speak a little bit of our concerns. You know, we just moved in the neighborhood about a year ago, a little bit over a year ago and, you know, it was hard enough for us to purchase the property with a railroad track that runs there on Pleasant Avenue. But we were able to look past that and that field was really one of the reasons why we were attracted to the neighborhood was, you know, that's a beautiful space where we could envision, you know, possibly using it at some points. But with this new proposal, our concern is the fence that they're looking at putting in, you know, that just doesn't really appeal to the neighborhood, I don't think. The lights, yeah, that's another concern of ours. Right now with the dome that they have at Holy Angels, you know, sometimes we'll get home after a night out with some friends and we'll notice at like midnight, they're still using that dome and, you know, there's still some noise, so that's a concern to us. But yeah, I mean, those are our concerns. Obviously, we appreciate the fact that that school's in the neighborhood, it's a beautiful school. But, you know, as new homeowners in the neighborhood, I don't think it fits in with the culture of the neighborhood, so.
Yeah, I think it would decrease property value, definitely. I don't know if you mentioned, but we're not opposed to the turf and having more space for, you know, the athletes to be able to practice. I work at a private school in Chanhass and I know how space can be very difficult and I know this is an opportunity to make money off letting people rent your fields. I know we hold galas and we do different things, I'm sure you guys have thought of all of that. But just some ideas, like she had mentioned earlier, the last lady about fundraising and other ways to maybe help the school make improvements and to, you know, go on for many more years. I do appreciate the private education and I'm, I have a lot of value in it. I just think this is really going to be a damper on the neighborhood and with Richfield just now up and coming and really being an area that people are moving to, I just would hate for our neighborhood to go down because of this proposed idea of the lights and the dome and going on earlier in the morning and later at night. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
Chair Vries Daniels?
Yes.
I just wanted to make one clarification before we get to the next speaker. Since people have referenced the existing dome, the approved hours at the existing dome are six AM to twelve-thirty AM. So that's just for the dome use, that's, I believe their light, I believe their exterior lights at the current field have to cut off at eleven PM. So the, just to clarify again, the proposed hours are to go until ten PM with this new dome and exterior lighting. I put six AM in there as a start time, just basically as a placeholder since that's what the existing dome was, if there's flexibility on that and I guess I'd ask the Holy Angels representatives.
Why is the hours not within our typical noise ordinance hours?
Because it was approved by Conditional Use Permit, I think the first dome, when it was approved in nineteen ninety-six, it was, it was given hours of six AM to eleven PM and they later came back, I think in two thousand four approximately, and asked for, asked the city council if they could, just because of demand at the dome, if they could use the existing dome until twelve-thirty AM and they were granted that ability.
Thank you for clarifying.
Hi, my name is Sati Shair and I live on six-seven-one-six Pleasant Avenue, right next to the lady on six-seven-one-two. Both our houses are actually facing, we're on the west side of the field, so we're facing the field and that's one of the reasons I bought the house, is the view of the field. It was open and you can see the horizon, I mean, being in Richfield and being able to see the horizon, that's very rare, so. And I think that's one of the reasons why my wife married me, so. Center picture, no, jokes apart, but I mean, that's, you know, we, I really love the, love being in Richfield. One of the reasons proximity to everything and the field was, like I said, one of the reasons as well because, you know, it's open and it's, it's, there's kids playing, which we like to see. I mean, it's not like we're against kids or sports, just like the other lady said. But we are concerned about, you know, like a closed dome to start with because that's going to change the view. We're going to be seeing a dome instead of seeing the sun or the moon rise in front of our house. And we're concerned about the construction noise that's going to cause vibrations on our house because it's right next to the field. And also, we're concerned about the lights, which already the current lights are kind of glaring, you know, right into our house as we're sleeping at night, so that's one of the concerns. And as well as the noise, now, you know, they said it's going to be six AM to ten PM, so that's like a wide range of, you know, a wide timeframe, we're going to get more noise. And like all the other ladies said here about the parking, we have seen people park right, you know, across our house, although it's, there's no parking there on that side, but people park there and walk right to the field and now it's going to be more attractive where people are going to just park there and even just check it out or something, people who don't even belong here. So, I guess these are some of the concerns. And also, our concern was the short notice that we got, you know, about this whole thing because we just heard about this last week when we got the letter. I mean, thankfully, Holy Angels sent us the letter and I thanked them for inviting us to a meeting last week, but that's the first time we heard about this and now this meeting. So, it's really short notice for us and we feel like if we had gotten like a year of advance notice, we might have, you know, at least thought about listing our mark, listing our house on the market and seeing what options we have. You know, so these are, these are our primary concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Bentley Bowlin, I live at sixty-seven twenty-eight Wentworth. I kind of enjoy having Holy Angels there, the football games are loud, the kids zipping through the neighborhood, it can be annoying. I live right across from Saint Peter's Church, so they zip out of the parking lot after school or after church and sometimes going way too fast. So I think we brought up that we'd love to see some speed bumps put in, something to slow them down. Because a lot of people, times people get out of church, they've been saved, they're sin-free, let's go. Some real concerns about this is with the fence going right up to the property lines and cutting off Pleasant, Pillsbury and Wentworth. Where's the city going to put snow? Right now, they're dead-end streets, so the city puts snow at the end of the road. Well, if there's a fence at the end of the road, snowplow meets fence, there's probably one winner. Parking in the area, I heard people in Pleasant complaining in Pillsbury. I gotta say, if the fence goes in, they can't get through there, so now they're going to park, continue to park on my street, Wentworth, which really is only about eight times a year now that we have no parking school day. But it used to be an issue before we had that. So we are probably looking at more kids parking in front of our streets, in front of our driveways. We're looking at more noise, we're looking at three to six, three to four hours every night of more noise in the neighborhood, which reduces our quality of life. And the lights. Now, we saw the pictures of Holy Angels, that they're doing the best they can to minimize the lights, but lights up there, everybody knows is going to be annoying. My biggest question that nobody's been able to answer, as a property owner near this, what's going to happen to my property values when I want to sell? Am I looking at a ten percent or a twenty percent hit? On houses in Richfield going from two hundred to three hundred thousand or more? That's a big significant impact to us. And I asked Matt at the meeting, he says, "Well, what, we're not the first group going through this. What is the impact, what's the history, what's the data say?" To people who have a Moby Dick sitting in the field next to their house with expanded use, lights. And that's, that's really the big question, what is this going to do to us? Are we, are we surrendering our hard-earned money to enable Holy Angels?
Thank you, thank you for coming. Is there anyone else? Please come up.
I'm Janelle Patel, me and my family live on six-seven-three-nine, oop, over here, six-seven-three-nine Pillsbury. So we are at the dead end in the center of the field. You know, we are bummed out, there's a lot of things that we like, we love the field, we love playing in the field. And I think this is a different request for me, if it was just AstroTurf, like, PE can't use the field, let's put AstroTurf, that's great. The fence would be a bummer because we use it for access to walk to the park, to cut through, but it's private property, get it? Put a fence up. And this is different than a single sport ask. We want to improve the baseball field and the ask for us is, ooh, baseball, three months, can I do that? Yep, I probably could, but this is all year. If I look at the current dome and where it's set up, it's nestled in. You got an apartment building, a street, Holy Angels and a field. The effect upon the community is a little different right now. I mean, I think it's okay, we know we moved into a school and that felt like, feels like a great use. But this puts more of the use on the residents than it does on Holy Angels. So if you look at the, where it's being placed, it's residents, residents, field that no one lives in and then the school. And so, one of my questions is, outside of high school hours and the high school teams using the field, how much will be rented out and how much will be used in other school or other committees? So, you know, if that's sixty or seventy percent of the time, that tells me the high school doesn't need it, they need it for income versus use. So that was one of my questions, I think, you know, everyone else is worrying about property value, we are thinking this is a forever home. If we had to move, what does that do? And then I think frequency in lights, that's what we're all concerned about because right now, we get some glow. Thinking about where the field would be right now, I think we would get more glow on our property and we're not the first ones, we're in the middle of the block, than what Holy Angels does currently, where their current dome is and the effect on their building. And we have small kids, we'd like in the summer to keep our windows open. If that, if this happens, we won't be able to. So I think that's a bummer for us too. We understand that they can't be, but I, I think from a community aspect, and that was one of the questions, is what does it do to the character? I think a half of the year, all you'll see is the dome, because it glows, it's big aura. And the other half of the year, if the sound isn't inside the dome, we're going to be listening to the sports scenes and I like them, on Saturdays, they play soccer, but an outdoor one game going on is a different sound and it's kind of enjoyable than the ask for two to three fields going all the time and it to be consistently every single day and then through the night. So, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
My name is Byron Tribblehorn and I'm one of the part owners of a property immediately southwest of the field and I'm just trying to imagine...
Can you state the address?
I'm sorry?
Can you state the address for me?
Oh, sure, six-seven-two-nine, six-seven-three-seven Pleasant Avenue South.
Thank you.
I'm trying to imagine, I'm guessing right now from me to that flag is forty feet. I'm trying to imagine an eighty-foot pole fifteen feet from the property line with incredibly bright lights. Talk about light pollution and noise pollution. And understand, Holy Angels needs this dome to defray their loss of income due to decreased enrollment. Well, what about my decreased income due to the unattractiveness of this eyesore right next door? And I guess the question was answered, why Holy Angels doesn't have to comply with the current noise ordinance? And it really isn't an adequate answer. It's, they should have to comply just like everybody else. So again, we're facing loss of value of our property. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
Hello, my name's Pete Haney, I'm with Minnesota Thunder Academy. Our office address is six-six-zero-seven Eighteenth Avenue, South Richfield, Minnesota. We have about five hundred kids, about twenty percent of them are actually from Richfield, who play soccer. In this city, there are not enough places and grass areas for us to have... In this city, there are not enough places and grass areas for us to have organized soccer. We are constantly running into conflicts and challenges in finding places for kids to play. Um, and this and working with Holy Angels would be a great solution and, um, would help the kids in Richfield. It would help, um, also bring more business to the economic center that you've kind of developed at sixty-fifth and Lyndale. Um, because with five hundred families dropping their kids off at soccer, many of them don't just park. They go over to the fast food restaurants. They go to Hula Hands. They spend money in the area. So, uh, we strongly support it and we think it helps benefit both the kids and the economy. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Uh, Scott Daley, uh, twenty-seven fifty-seven Parkview Boulevard in Robbinsdale, but I work for Holy Angels. Just wanna respond to some of the questions people have. Um, first off at the parking, as somebody mentioned, we've, you know, by fencing it off, it's gonna, the southwest corner there where people sneak onto the field is gonna cut that access off. We're gonna force everybody to come through our, our main entrance where we have adequate parking for enough people, even in our highest times of use for both fields. Um, you know, we'll use roughly maybe sixty percent of the parking stalls and that's if everybody drives and nobody carpools. You know, we do have some issues on our football game days and graduations where we do have, uh, run into a few parking issues, but, um, we feel we have adequate parking and that we can eliminate people from parking over there and cutting through the field. Um, we do have, uh, a light guy. We brought our, our light consultant that we brought with us, who's done, uh, recently a Richfield, uh, baseball stadium. Uh, and he could add a little bit to the lighting and how it works. You got it now?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name is Craig Gallup. I'm with Moscow Sports Lighting. I live at one five three three one Woodside Lane in Minnetonka. So, uh, neighbor to the west. Uh, I'm here tonight basically to serve as a technician, consultant, to answer questions that you may have and also that the neighbors have regarding the lighting on proposed lighting for the field. Um, I, I noticed that several of the neighbors are concerned, uh, as they look out the, their window, they see the existing lights from the football field. Um, what they're seeing from the football field actually is glare light. Um, the city ordinance addresses two things. It addresses spill light, which is a very finite. You can walk out and you can have one foot candle or a half a foot candle or five foot candles. It's very measurable. Glare light is very subjective. Uh, glare light actually is when a person looks back towards the lighting fixtures, the brightness, the sharpness of that light. Oftentimes neighbors find the glare light way more offensive than having a small amount of light on their property. It's, uh, you're sitting in their living room and they see lights coming through that sharp, bright light. That, that's what's offensive. Uh, Matt, is it possible to put that picture up?
Yep. Uh, if we could get the tech to, there we go. We got the.
Great. Um, a few people have referenced the existing light on the football field. Um, if you look at the far left picture, that is very similar to the type of reflector that provides the light on the football field. If you look to the far right, that is the light that is proposed for the new facility. Uh, the technology in the last fifteen years, tremendous how it's advanced. Uh, glare light will not be a problem for the neighbors. Once you get a few feet past that field, that light cuts off extremely sharp. As they look out, they won't be looking into a bright fixture. They'll be looking out and seeing something similar to that, uh, fixture on the far right. As far as the, uh, the height of the poles, um, the reason for the eighty foot pole is it brings the light down. If it's a short pole, the light shoots straight out, carries past the field, carries to the neighbors. The taller the pole, the better the cutoff. And the poles are not large in diameter. A lot of times people think of an eighty foot pole, they think of like a cell tower that's two foot, two and a half foot in diameter. These poles are considerably, they're almost half that size. So when they look out, um, they're gonna see a galvanized steel pole, but they're not gonna see a lot of the light. They're not gonna see the things that they anticipate that will be offensive.
Thank you. I do have a question for you. Um, so is what's in the current dome, the nineteen seventy-six lights?
I'm sorry.
In the current dome or?
Yeah. And, and there's two things we, when we're talking about the lighting. Uh, I'm talking about the exterior outdoor lighting when the dome is down.
Yep. Is that the nineteen seventy-six light that you have shown here? Or is it something else in between?
I'm sorry.
Is it the nineteen seventy-six light that you have?
The lighting, uh, is a, is a far right. It's, it's, it's a, it, it actually came out about six months ago because of the, the, the advancements of that. It's just so advanced over anything out there.
Sure. The new ones, but the old field.
The current stadium is the lighting on that far left.
Nineteen seventy-six.
Yep.
Do you have any plans of replacing that? With these new awesome LEDs?
Um, it's something that we've been looking into, uh, but there's a cost to that as well. And we're, we're trying to upgrade all of our facilities and it's on our list. Yes, eventually.
Thank you. All right. This is an open house. Does anybody have any questions for the lighting?
Erin, I just, I just, would you just go over again about what you said before about parking? So did you say that you have, you feel like you have adequate parking like on, right on the campus of Holy Angel without it having to spill over?
Between us and, um, Blessed Trinity, whoever, or Saint Peter's Church, we have an agreement with, we have, we feel we have adequate parking besides, uh, our four to six football games and graduation.
So what the people that are, that have testified have said that, you know, that they have to deal with parking being, you know, in front of the driveways and so.
I can see people that use the baseball field, use the dead end on Pleasant. Is that?
Yeah, they were talking about Pleasant and Wentworth.
Walk straight down there. I can see that as an issue with those fencing off the perimeter and only allowing access from this, the north east corner to that field. That'll solve a lot of that problem. We'd also be willing to put in some no AHA parking signs or something along that street too, if that would help.
So you're saying that even without carpooling or encouraging carpooling, that you feel that you have adequate parking for both of these domes? If they're both have activities on the same evening?
Yes, we have. I mean, currently we have use where our field's full and the grass field's full and we don't really have an issue like today. Um, we had plenty of parking spots available when I was leaving to come here and, um, or before I left to come here, there was a baseball game going on. We had some soccer practice going on the other end of the field and lacrosse going out on our stadium field.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
I get this here. Scott, Scott dug through the, the records of the users of the dome past years. I think the, the heaviest use was a hundred and ten occupants in the dome at one time. Uh, so we said, all right, if, if you had that case, it's rare, there's that many. Usually it's about half that. But if you had that hundred and ten and you had the same number in the other dome, two hundred and twenty, usually they're not all in one car, especially if it's youth, you know, there's a parent coming and dropping them off. But if you took worst case and said two hundred and twenty people between the two domes and all of them in one car, uh, that's two hundred and twenty stalls. And then if you allow for the cars coming for kind of the next shift of users and they overlap, maybe your count gets up to three fifty or something. But the school has with the, the church parking lot, five hundred and sixty some parking stalls. Five eighty-four. So we're, we're well over those kind of quantities. I think the street parking is people looking for a more convenient place to park. So they are dealing with, uh, the traffic leaving those lots. I think that's one, a separate one for the city and the neighbors to address.
Well, just a question of staff. Is there, uh, is there, uh, any thought of perhaps signage in some fashion to restrict uh, Holy Angels participant parking? I, I know that's a hard one to probably police, but I just, is that, has there ever been any discussion about that?
Uh, we can, we can definitely ask the public works department what options may be available on those dead ends. Um, I understand there, you know, the, um, Pillsbury and Pleasant, they're quite narrow, uh, you know, even for dead ends. So you, you don't want people driving in there and turning around or, you know, trying to pull into people's driveways to turn around.
It might make it more palatable for the neighborhood if they knew that they weren't gonna have to deal with that.
Yep. And like, well, so like Holy Angels has said, they are proposing to fence off, um, that per, that per, that's southern and western perimeter of the field, uh, which should make that a less attractive option to park on those streets. Because it results in an even longer walk to get there versus just parking in the parking lot. So I think they are making, with the fence, they're, they're making an effort to cut down on that. But yeah, we can definitely, um, ask the public works department what other signage options might be available to discourage folks from, from driving down those streets.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else for the open house?
And I had a few more points, just to answer a few questions people had. The six AM start time.
You have thirty seconds left.
Okay.
Your time.
Um, you know, we, we anticipate probably an eight o'clock start, um, maybe on rare occasions, seven o'clock if there's some special need to squeeze in an extra game or something on that field. But usually, you know, eight to 10 o'clock, trying to stay within what they do at Richfield Parks. Um, same thing with the lighting for the field lights and when the dome's in operation, ten o'clock. We understand there's homes closer and we're trying to minimize the impact of, of it there.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else for the, hi, please come up.
I'm Carl Wilgus, six seven two nine Pillsbury Avenue. Uh, this may be an inappropriate metaphor, but I'm thinking, here we are, neighbors. If I had a neighbor with fairly large property who decided to change thing, the aesthetics, the noise, the traffic, and the reason would be that it would benefit them financially and make them competitive. I would find it rather high-handed to allow that to happen and simply swallow the inconvenience. That's very disturbing. And the exact change in the traffic and the amount, I've seen no figures about it. I've seen speculations and claims. That's not adequate. The other night driving home, I couldn't even see the street because of the glare of the lights and it was eleven thirty at night. So it seems that in the past, accommodations have been made, but they haven't been followed. And I'm not thinking we should be in a position to go chasing to the police or the civic authorities to expect the neighbor to respect a certain, I guess decency and, uh, neighborliness. And that's my concern and I'm disturbed by this. And it's simply not easily dismissed. And that's how it feels in some ways, that the needs of the one exceed the needs of the many in this case. And, uh, unfortunately the vocabulary of school makes it a different thing like ones depriving the children. Children can get a good education without necessarily having glaring lights at eleven thirty at night. So I don't think that's an answer.
Thank you.
One thing that hasn't been addressed is the, um, fire safety. We already have, it's a one-way going down, um, Pleasant. And what happens when there's a fire? And there's already problems with people not parking close enough to the curb. And an, um, an ambulance, a fire truck cannot get down the street. All right. And, sorry, there was one more point I was gonna make. I mean, it, it's just a rather, um, frustrating, we, you know, we have these buildings that are nestled into this quiet residential neighborhood and it will totally change that neigh, it will totally change the neighborhood. And I, you know, I honestly think that Holy Angels has outgrown their property and I, I think that they need to consider other options.
Thank you. Next. Yes, please come up.
Hi, my name's Jim Fleming. I live at sixty-seven thirty-four Wentworth. I'm the person that reached out to the planning commission and to also Tom Shipley at the school prior to the meeting at Holy Angels, which I was unable to attend. Um, I gave my list of concerns at that time. Traffic, parking, lighting, noise, just the, the general ones that everyone else has already addressed. Uh, a big one though is property values. We live in Wentworth Avenue and virtually all the traffic going to the school goes down our street because when the school is open, Blessed Trinity takes blazing out. It doesn't allow any car traffic, only bus traffic. At the end of the day, at beginning of the day and at the end of the day, they either entering entrances off Niklet or it's off Wentworth. Through the same, that bus at Trinity parking lot. And you get all the faculty, you get all the students, you get all the school buses. Um, it's, it's a busy street. Um, our, we had a boulevard tree which came down in a storm a couple of weeks, a month, a years ago, I should say. And that tree was hit every year by automobiles coming too fast out of Holy Angels. We have a no parking sign there. It's been hit every winter. Uh, we do have a concern that nobody does observe. I told this to Tom. There's, they don't observe the speed limit. They don't observe the stop sign. And we now have two families living in our neighborhood that have small children. Not to mention Jesse Foley from the school who lives right behind me. Um, we cut a gate in the fence in our back, in his backyard. So his family and his kids could go through our yard and not have to travel sixty-eighth street. Um, I, like I said, I'm very concerned about the property value impact and excuse me, Matt, but when you said the noise would not go up on the, if they put a synthetic turf on there, which by the way, I am in favor of for the school. Um, it's not used that much because of the long grass and the wetness and things like that. If you put it to use three sixty-five, the noise is gonna go up and it's gonna go up not only during the school day, but it's gonna go until 10 o'clock at night. You said that there wouldn't be no, no additional noise. It will just basically on the use. Also in, in, when they're talking about, there's adequate parking. There may be adequate parking spaces, but where are the cars gonna go? They're gonna go on Niklet if they can, and they're primarily gonna go on Wentworth because that's the cutoff that everybody know that goes to the school. And in a former life, I was a general manager for an organization called Team Minnesota Hockey. It was a triple A hockey before, like it is today. We ran tournaments for 10 days at three different ranks in Minnesota. Um, he died now Eden Prairie in Burnsville. And I can, I can generate, if I was running the Star Dome during the summer, forget about the dome, but during the the time when everyone's gonna be outside, I'd be running lacrosse tournaments, soccer tournaments, softball tournaments, anything I can do to bring revenue in, because that's what it's there for. Where are you gonna put all those people? Same thing with the Thundering Hurt coming in for soccer. They're not just gonna wanna use it for practice. All of a sudden it's gonna be games. We're not talking about just this summer, the summer app. We're talking about what happens when there's a different group of people here talking about this in five year. That's how the variance went through for the, on the, um, existing dome to go to twelve thirty AM. It goes, comes in with very little fanfare. So we gotta be thinking about not just what goes on now, but the future homeowners, is this neighborhood even viable anymore? Should we just put apartment buildings in? What we should do?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
I'm Dave Bizicki, sixty-nine thirty-three Stevens. Um, one of the things I wanna talk about a little bit is this is a private enterprise. I mean, the first dome takes care of their school activities. This is to make money. This is gonna put demands on our, our police, our fire, our rescue, and they're not paying any taxes to pay for this. So I think that's another thing to consider as we go through this. It puts demands on our services, you know, for their capital gain.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Anyone else? You can sign in afterwards if you wanna.
Uh, good evening. Um, my name is Jesse Foley. As Jim mentioned, I live at sixty-seven thirty-five Pillsbury. Uh, just a couple houses in from the south, um, uh, boundary of the Holy Angels field. I've got, uh, children at Holy Angels and also at Blessed Trinity School. Um, and I'm also an employee of the school. So I look at it from a number of different perspectives. Um, I'm very much in support of this project. Uh, it's very exciting to the families and children that, that participate out there. It's gonna bring a lot of, um, excitement for the school. And as was mentioned, it, it is a competitive environment for us as a, as a private institution. Um, I do look at that play surface in terms of its safety. Uh, I walk across that field often and it takes such a beating. It's really a hard and unsafe playing surface. And this is just more opportunities for children to play in a healthy environment. Um, as was mentioned a little bit here by a number of different people that, uh, this is about the money and this is about, um, you know, the school getting money. You know, our, our biggest thing is access to the school. You know, our, our biggest thing is access to the school. Um, we work very hard and have a lot of innovative ideas to provide this opportunity, this school, to kids from all different cities, but we serve the needs of a lot of Richfield children and families. And that's a lot of what this uh, innovative idea is about, is to provide more opportunities for them. Um, I think uh, on a macro level, I think it's understood that uh, a healthy schools, growing schools, growing organizations are good for the city of Richfield and I think this will play a big part in it. I think some of the um, uh, questions about traffic and speed, you know, I think speed bumps can be a great option to slow traffic down so that's safe for, for small children and children of all ages. And then finally, I think it's worth noting that um, there is a sound system that's in the, the current dome stadium, but there would not be a sound system um, in this particular play surface. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming and speaking.
Hi, my name is Pat Fleming. I live at sixty-seven three-four Wentworth. I'm three houses in from um, the edge of the field and I cross the street from the parking lot. And um, I hope they do something about the current lights because when I go upstairs into my bedroom, I'm, we live in a story and a half. It, those lights from the current dome shine right into our bedroom. You either have to pull the shades totally down to watch the news or you have to um, stay downstairs. So from that standpoint, secondly, I'm just wondering if we're having this open discussion now and the city council, it's gonna be up for a vote on June thirteenth. There's really not any time to, you know, address any of the issues or come back with any answers, is there?
Um, that's why we're here tonight, like we can answer any questions possible this evening.
So it's like, anything that we have to say, if it's not answered here, there's no, nothing more being looked into.
I do believe you can request your city council member to take it off of the...
Well, so right now, this is scheduled to go to the June thirteenth meeting of the city council. Generally, what happens is there's the public hearing here, the results of the public hearing and the recommendation of the Planning Commission are reported to the council. They don't usually take additional testimony because it is not a public hearing. They take the testimony that was here, read it, and the recommendation of the Planning Commission and make a decision based on that. Um, you know, if Holy Angels heard what happened tonight and decided, you know what, I think we can address some of these things. Um, if we just take a step back, uh, they can request that the meeting be delayed, for instance, an additional two weeks. And then come back to the council on June twenty-sixth, whatever that date would be, and say, um, okay, we heard everything at the Planning Commission meeting. These, these are the ways that we're gonna try to address that. This is our somewhat revised proposal based on what we heard. Um, that wouldn't give you an opportunity to speak again unless they decided to open that for testimony. Um, but it, they do have the opportunity to step back and take a little extra time before that meeting.
Okay. Yeah, 'cause my concerns are, you know, the same as everybody's and um, as far as the noise and, and we love Holy Angels. I mean, and our son went there, our boys went to Blessed Trinity, we've lived there since nineteen eighty-three. But I just can't fathom the idea of looking out my back window to a dome all, all winter long. I, it's just, i- i- it's gonna ruin the landscape of the whole neighborhood and I, I agree. I don't think we'll get near what we should for our houses when we wanna move. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Hello, my name is Wayne Peterson. I live at sixty-seven thirty-two Pillsbury. Now I've heard everybody's problems here tonight. My main concern is drainage. Where's all this water gonna have to go? I've got, there's four houses in our block between St. Peters, the parking lot, the existing dome, the new field that's going in, apartments behind me. Look out in the backyard, I see all our yards. Are they gonna flood it out? Are the streets gonna flood? Are they gonna have to put new sewers in around the streets to drain everything? That's mostly my main concern. Where this water's all gonna go? Uh, and what about uh, putting it in front of the school? They were gonna tear it up, put a strip mall in a couple of years ago, put the dome out in front facing Nicollet. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Off the question, sorry, first time I've ever been here, to what you were asking about if-
He's speaking at the microphone.
Oh yeah, yeah. Sorry, I don't like the microphone. Janelle, six-seven three-nine Pillsbury. If, if whatever the group decides, decides, and then if Holy Angels goes back and makes some changes or doesn't or what have you, why is it built in how the government works that they can go back, revise, and then re-propose without another discussion? And that the people don't get to talk again?
Sure. So there, there is another option. The, the Planning Commission could uh, vote to continue the public hearing, hearing to the next meeting. If Holy Angels indicated tonight that they wanted to have a chance to revise the proposal without going forward, that is another option. Um, you know, the idea is that they're hearing your feedback, they're gonna make changes in support of your feedback. Um, and then the council would be able to discern based on your testimony tonight, whether or not they were able to address those things adequately.
Okay.
It would, it would be their choice though.
Okay.
Thank you. Would you like to help answer that question?
Uh, ma'am, sure. I was just, there was a question about the stormwater drainage. I, I could address that if you'd like.
Perfect, thank you.
Um, the, first of all, the, the new artificial turf field is not a hard surface. It's a pervious surface, just like the natural grass. Um, and one thing that'll happen is when we, when we put that in, the um, the grade, that whole area will be, be leveled out. It'll be flatter than it is now, which will, the water will still flow to the southeast corner, which is where it all flows now. But it will, it'll flow at a much slower rate, which will allow more of the water to percolate through that uh, artificial turf. And there is a drainage system that'll be installed underneath the field that will collect some of that water that's, that's uh, percolated through. And it'll leave into the, the current uh, uh, stormwater system, but at a much slower rate, much more controlled rate. And your Public Works folks have reviewed that.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, I just did have a question about the uh, the drain tile system, you know, 'cause there are like twenty feet on center, roughly it seems like, for the whole network. Yep. Um, is there, at the end of the pipe where it outlets to the southeast corner of the property there, is there um, any sort of knife valve, gate valve, anything like that in terms of being able to provide a longer duration of storage before it lets out? I mean, 'cause that's really the big thing is we're, I think they're worried about it just increasing the flashiness of it.
There's, there's a small swell area that will allow a little bit of, of fluctuation in that.
Okay.
But, but overall, that water's gonna get to that point at a much slower rate than it does now, which, which is intended to reduce the chance of it, it kinda overwhelming the storm system as it leaves the property.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm wondering how long is it going to take for Richfield to determine whether or not this will be, um, and what the outcome will be? Because my house is up for sale right now. If Richfield is really gonna say it's okay for Holy Angels to do this, I will need to disclose that to my real estate office.
Yep, so I think as-
And I, I wanna know how long that is gonna be.
Yep, so I think as most states, the fourteenth, June, sorry, I-
I believe it's the thirteenth.
The thirteenth of June would be the city council.
So June thirteenth is when the next, the city council vote, as it stands right now, would be voting on this.
So what would that date be?
June thirteenth.
June, June thirteenth. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, ma'am, we've given you three minutes and then an additional thirty seconds. Yeah, you can ask two questions. Yep.
Um, my first question is, where will the construction trucks and everything I got be accessing uh, the Holy Angels property?
Sir-
Your main entrance.
The main entrance is what you stated.
Do we have a written guarantee that you won't be using Pleasant Avenue or our parking lots to, for construction trucks going through? How about when you're putting up the fence?
Okay, ma'am, do you have a specific question?
Yeah, I'm asking if they're, I'm asking, are you going to be using Pleasant Avenue for access when you're putting up the fence or doing any other type of construction? Are you going to be using Pleasant Avenue?
And they've answered no. Okay. Thank you. Yes, do you have some questions? Yeah, come up to the microphone.
Um, is there any way that we could compromise and there could be, the plan could be altered a little? So it's maybe not adding bright lights and another dome, but adding turf to give those extra hours of playing time, but not necessarily early in the morning and really late at night? So aesthetically, it still looks nice and it kind of makes all the residents happy and our property values don't go down significantly, but also Holy Angels can continue to grow and make more profits to sustain the school for the long term.
Thank you.
Okay, is that, do you guys do that or who?
Right, so there are a number of items that Holy Angels is asking for. They're asking for the conditional use permit and the variance. The, the uh, Planning Commission can make a recommendation to approve or deny any of those pieces. And those recommendations go to the city council then for a final decision.
Okay, great. Well, thank you. Thank you. Do you have a question? Yes. Um, can Holy Angels please address her question? If, if you have an answer to that, you may not. Okay, they don't have it in front of them. Thank you. Thank you. Um, ma'am? Okay. No more conversation outside of the open meeting, which you have to come up to the mic. We can answer questions, that staff can answer. Um, that meeting was not from a city perspective, right? So that, the open house was not from ours. That was a private meeting that they held. Alright?
Well, good evening. I'm Tom Shipley, president at Holy Angels. And first of all, commission, thank you for listening.
Did you say your address?
Uh, seventy ninety-two Cahill in Edina.
Thank you.
Um, first of all, thank you for taking the time tonight and allowing us to come in and talk a little bit. Um, I came here tonight with um, with hopes that we um, can come to some sort of compromise and that people can understand where we're at and what our needs are. Because we certainly, from last Thursday night, understand where our community members are at and our neighbors. Um, I don't really feel like a very good neighbor right now. Um, I feel like there's a lot of noise, there's a lot of traffic, there's a lot of congestion, um, there's noisy students, and there's a lot going on. And quite frankly, um, we encourage the neighbors, when they have concerns, to let us know. And um, I spoke today with our dean of students and I said, how, how many much neighbor concerns are we getting on traffic? And he said, you know, maybe one or two concerns all year long, that he, that he was notified by. So I would encourage you and our neighbors that, you know, when you see our students doing things they shouldn't be doing, let us know. Um, we'll, we'll address it. But I gotta be honest with you, I've got, you know, six hundred and twenty-five fourteen to eighteen-year-old young teenagers and they do make noise. And they sometimes do silly things. They drive a little too fast. And they do, do things at times that um, we have to talk to them about. And so again, I would encourage you to let us know because we wanna be good neighbors and we wanna make sure that we're all living together. And, you know, this is my sixth year at the school and in six years, I've seen Richfield just take off. Uh, this is a tremendous community and I like to think that Holy Angels plays a role in that. But we need to remain competitive and I know that bristles some folks when we say competitive. But the people that, um, and the students that we get, and we do get, as Jesse Foley said, a number of Richfield students. And we're right now um, nearly putting over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of additional dollars into um, tuition help for Richfield students. And so, you know, we're trying to be the good neighbor that we can be, but we need to hear and we need that communication and we're open. Um, it was twenty thirteen when the first time, Melissa, we came to the staff and talked about a comprehensive campus master plan. And on that was an all-weather surface in the um, the back quarter there of the um, of the park. And we worked very closely with staff to make sure that we followed all the regulations and did everything we need to do. In fact, we, Holy Angels and the city of Richfield, through your Park and Recs Department, put in a um, an opportunity through the Hennepin County Youth Sports for a grant for that field. And we were granted in, in um, cooperation with the school district, um, Holy Angels and with you, and we were given that grant. So this is not the first time that we've been in front of the commission, um, perhaps, maybe the first time with nothing but the comprehensive plan. But we're here to say that this is an important thing for our students and uh, we really hope you can consider it. And we are willing to discuss a lot of the concerns that parents and the um, the people in the, in the neighborhood have. So um, we're happy to do that. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Well, we're glad you came up.
I live at four hundred West Sixty-seventh, so I, I don't see the dome.
And your name?
Mark Stainer.
Thank you.
I don't see the lights, I don't hear the noise, but I do know children who play in that dome and who practice in that dome that's there. So if you think of Richfield as up and coming and there's a place for kids in Richfield, we have to give them a place to play. You can't let them hang out over at the parking lot across the street or get in trouble someplace else. You have to have a place for them to go. That's my point.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Is there anybody else that hasn't spoken that would like to come up for the open house? Public hearing? I just called the wrong thing. Anyone else? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Close the public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, um, so we've heard a lot of comments. Does anybody want to make a motion and then we can discuss it?
Let's see here.
Um, okay, is there three different pieces? Can we break this up?
Yes, so there's a, there's the conditional use permit amendment, which is to, to modify the site plan so that they have an approved conditional use permit currently. So they're amending, amending the site plan, which means they need to amend their conditional use permit. So that includes essentially the site layout, uh, the turf field, um, and the additional building. And then there are variances, sort of with interrelated and, you know, I guess deeply interrelated to the conditional use permits. There's a variance for the building height, there's a variance for the, the field setback, um, and then there's the height of the poles.
Cheerios Daniels? Yes. I, I feel like it might help for people to start um, articulating maybe what their initial thoughts are.
Sure.
So that we can try to help you pull apart the motion if you need to.
Good point.
So I, I'm just wondering aloud if it wouldn't help to, if you think about some of the neighbor complaints now with respect to hours, if, if Angels is expanding their capacity, would they be willing to pull down on late-night hours? Given that the current just after midnight threshold was because of a need to have intense, more intense uses, is, is having a not as late of a time for their overall campus, something that would help both the neighbors and still accommodate Holy Angels' needs. I mean, I, just as we, as we talk about the, whether or not it's a good fit, how we can make it a better fit and how we can address some of the concerns raised, if one of the concerns is late-night operation of the existing Star Dome, would having a second dome make it easier to not have the Star Dome open as late? And that's really not an us question, it's in, it's a Holy Angels question really. And I know the public hearing is closed, but I'm seeing nodded, nodding uh, from the gallery. Um, so that's, that's at least one of my issues. It seems if we can make the current pain points less painful for the neighborhood and address some of the current concerns, maybe an expanded use isn't quite so bad.
Yes. Um, I heard a lot about parking and, but yet access. So I think, you know, the addition of a fence is going to reduce the parking on the side streets, but then limit the use. So it's kind of a catch twenty-two, right? So it's kind of a catch-22, right? But I know parking is a concern for everyone, right? And that driving-through, so I think the fence is a nice addition. If there's a gate, it is a private property, right? You know, I think that's the biggest thing, is it's not a public park. It is a private property. Anyone else have any random thoughts?
Well, I do also think that, I'll just point out that I think it's good that if the existing Star Dome has a sound system, but there's no intent to put sound amplification in the additional facility, it helps soften some of the impact.
Yeah. I had major concerns about the lights, but I know with the LED and that, that helps a ton, you know, as we see new light. So the glare from the other lights, I would hope that Holy Angels could also replace the older lights to make the neighbors happy, you know, as you're looking at feedback, to get that LED to reduce that glare. But I have less concerns about the new lights, being that they are LED, and not that Friday night light, football lights, you know?
Yeah, I mean, that's the thing that concerns me most about neighborhood feedback, is it really seemed like the project was being singled out, not because of what the new project represented, but more because of the bad feelings or bad technology associated with the old project.
Chair Reeves-Daniels, Commissioner Vizecki, I, it sounds like their conversation is kind of revolving around the, the hours at the existing dome, which is written into their, their existing approved conditional use permit. So if you're thinking of making a motion or, you know, opening the door to that motion that would modify those existing hours, it'd probably be best to, I guess, to get some feedback from Holy Angels on, on that option.
Can we do that if the public hearing's closed?
Yes, the applicant can speak at any time.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Can you come up to the mic? Yes. Would you be open?
We could, we would certainly be open to discussing, maybe scaling back a little bit, but we have to see how this project turns out before we commit to anything like that. I mean, the, the reality is there's so much demand right now, and for youth sports and, and adult leagues, I still occasionally get out on the soccer field and run around, and we're constantly fighting to find space. So some of the later stuff is actually, gives the adults a chance to play, too. There's an adult Richfield league, and I don't want to completely say yes at this point, but we could certainly talk if we had some time. I mean, you're not looking, are you looking for an answer now?
Nope.
No, I think, Chair Reeves-Daniels, I think we were just looking for, is that something that we would discuss, or that's just off the table?
We could definitely discuss that. I think, you know, Monday through Thursday, cutting back to eleven-thirty on the existing one, would still be able for us to end and have time to get everybody out of there before The weekend stuff, we'd have to discuss internally.
Okay, thank you. Do you have anything?
Yeah, I don't, I, I still don't know how to feel completely about this. I think the noise concerns from the neighbors are, are valid. I think Gordon makes a good point that so much of it is about the current dome and not knowing exactly what the new one is going to be like. But actually, one comment really struck me from, I think, a gentleman on Pillsbury, that if this were his neighbor to the north with a single-family home and a big property, and they were putting up these lights, we would take issue with that, and I don't think we would even consider that. And yet, this is a residential property, this is own, single-family residential. It, it might be a PUD if we're built today, but it, it isn't. So I'm having trouble, there are a lot of things that, if it were this way, it might be that way, but it, it isn't that way. So I, my inclination is to not support at least what's proposed here. And I think my, my biggest concern is that six AM to ten PM hours, which seem, that is literally eight hours, where it's not allowed to be used. So unless people sync their sleep schedule completely at Holy Angels' use of their field, that seems like an undue burden.
Okay.
And you'd be agreeable to that changing in the conditional use permit to? Okay.
Okay. So for those of you at home, agreeable to seven? Helpful? Is there, existing noise ordinance, seven to ten?
That's correct. Yeah, city noise, noise ordinances run from seven to ten PM. The existing operation was obviously exempted from that through their conditional use permit, in terms of the hours of usage, but they do still have to obey, you know, overall city noise ordinances.
Correct.
You know, because the, the noise ordinance that goes till ten PM, it doesn't say complete silence after ten PM. So they, they are supposed to be operating within the noise ordinances regardless of those later hours.
Gotcha, okay.
If you do want to... So if you're going to modify, my, my recommended motion in there included the six AM start, so you'll just want to amend that to seven AM.
Thank you. Anybody else have any thoughts?
Yeah, I just think in general to be on record about it, you know, I, I, I really do support Holy Angels and what they have done for the community, and I really do, you know, while, while there are, have been some complaints, are some complaints about the existing dome and things that, you know, the noise issues in traffic, traffic in particular, you know, it seems like it's, you know, the dome is currently in a site, the existing dome is currently in a site that, you know, it, it works a little better for the neighborhood. And I feel like the second dome, second dome in particular, doesn't really, doesn't really mesh well with, you know, what a lot of the neighbors are, are seeing around them. And I, you know, as it stands, I, I'd be inclined to, you know, not, you know, to, to not be in favor of it, you know, I, but that's not to say I'm not in favor of, you know, the athletic field and the upgrades as a whole. The lighting, I think, definitely needs to be worked on. I, I still have yet to believe that the LEDs are a better upgrade than the old halogens or even before that, fluorescents and condensants, whatever were used prior to that. So I, I guess I would like to see a better example of what that might actually represent before I can make a judgment on that. But I mean, I guess it's just, you know, you, you have the benefit of a hundred-foot buffer with trees raised above the railroad tracks on the one side and a really wide-open field on the south. Now you're twenty-five feet away with the field, you know, what's to stop, you know, spectators at the outside of the field from watching? How do you guarantee that with people not always, you know, lingering right next to the property boundaries? If that's a concern, too. You know, that there, there are a whole host of issues that I, you know, I'm, I'm inclined to, you know, agree to some degree with the residents around the area, and I would like to see them address. And I don't think, you know, the motion as it stands, or even with a, a minor amendment, I could, you know, vote yes for it at the moment, so.
Yeah, I'm really torn about this. I'm probably the one that has the history here, because I was on the city council back in nineteen ninety-six. And I supported the dome then, and I really do appreciate what Holy Angels is doing right now, as far as really open to addressing the needs of the neighborhood. And I think I would, I think this is probably a good thing for the community. I think, I think I, I did hear someone say about having a place for the kids to play. That was one of my reasons for supporting it back in nineteen ninety-six. And if the motion comes before me and we go through it, I would support Holy Angels going through with the dome at this time.
So...
I'm gonna make a motion?
I'm gonna make a motion. I guess I move approval of the conditional use permit with the requirement that Holy Angels study pulling back hours for the existing Star Dome, have a provision in the conditional use permit that does not allow for sound amplification in the new facility. It was verbally indicated that it wouldn't be there, but build it into the conditional use permit. And maybe a timetable, not as part of the conditional use permit, but Holy Angels to come forward with a timetable on updating lighting in the existing facility to soften impact on the neighbors.
Seven AM to ten?
And seven AM. Well, so this facility would be seven AM to ten. I think we're looking for, hopefully, them coming to city council with a compromise when the ordinance gets heard for the Star Dome hours, since that's part of their existing conditional use permit.
Staff, does that work as a motion?
Yes, it does.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
All right, discussion.
So what is the expectation with regards to the hours for the existing dome?
Well, a chunk of this is what's going to have to be weighed by council when it comes up.
Because we can't change that conditional use permit tonight.
Right.
But as a stipulat, oh, we can.
No, that's true. You could add, you could add, you're amending the existing conditional use permit, and so you can put an amendment in here that changes the allowable hours.
And the reason why I didn't...
You can recommend that.
The reason why I didn't specifically cite that was if we have at, at least an eighteen-month window for construction, if we're immediately changing the conditional use permit, it's going to impact that period before the new facility is in place.
So your motion includes a timetable to when they would update that?
What's to keep them from just not doing that in eighteen months?
They still have to close out permits to be able to use and occupy the space.
Staff, are we able to attach a commission that doesn't take effect for eighteen months or something?
I believe so. You could make it effective when the second dome is operational or with some kind of, so the second dome should be operational November one, twenty eighteen. So you could do it right then, or with, with some kind of phase-in period. Your, your motion was to discuss, though, it wasn't to...
Correct.
You might, if that's something you want to be set as a stipulation, you want...
Yeah, somebody would have to move.
A little harder language than discussion.
So we have a motion and second?
Can you amend your motion?
Tell me, I suggest an amendment that when the new dome is operational, the hours to, for the old dome will be limited to eleven-thirty.
I'll accept that amendment.
And I'll accept that, too.
So I, I would say, in terms of the issues that have been laid out, I'm, I'm convinced that parking is adequately addressed by the fence. Public Works could look at things if they wanted to, but I, I wouldn't think it would be necessary. I, I'm satisfied with the answer about drainage. With lights, I, I, I'm still not satisfied that there's a great answer for why there should be these really tall light poles fifteen feet away. I think there's a logistical answer for why that benefits the lights and so on. It still is kind of a visual impact, but I think the actual lighting itself is satisfactory. So if, if we go forward, limiting the existing one to eleven-thirty, I'm, I'm satisfied with that compromise, and I would support that.
Do you guys have any comments, discussion? I, I agree. I think, you know, compromising with the neighbors about the other pieces as well. It also makes me feel better if the dome isn't open twenty-four, you know, it's not going to be up all year round. It is going to be up in those more winter months, and the lights will be dimmer, that it's not a permanent fixture, right? It's only there a certain time. Okay, so if there's no further discussion, I'll call for a vote on our current amended motion. All right? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes. All right, we will move on to our next agenda item. Yeah, everyone is welcome to stay, or we can take a minute while you file out.
We still need...
What?
I thought you were passing, proposing for the whole, the whole motion, which is good.
Melissa? Did that motion encompass everything, variances as well? Okay.
I think that motion tagged everything.
As proposed with the additional.
I was ticking them off.
Perfect, thank you. Oh, sorry.
No.
I would say I understood the motion that I voted on to be about all of the items.
I did as well.
Okay.
Okay. All right, liaison reports. Community Service Advisor Commission, that's me. The last meeting, they went and took a tour of the pool, which I sadly missed, so I thought that would be fun to go see the city pool. But that's really it for community services. City Council?
Only thing I have to say is vote tomorrow.
Yes.
We've got a city council race, and it's an important one.
Vote if you're not in Ward One.
Yeah, don't vote if you're not in Ward One.
HRA is Allison, she's not here. Although, so HRA expanded itself to be...
Kind of. Okay. The HRA voted to approve the creation of an EDA, an Economic Development Authority. Actually, the, the city council voted to do that. The HRA is the appointed body. They will also serve as the Economic Development Authority.
Do we need a separate liaison? Do we need a liaison as Allison just, because their meeting is right after another, right?
Right, right now, they're right after another. I don't anticipate, you know, the, the EDA won't really have any functions or budget until twenty eighteen.
Okay.
So at this point, no, it is something that perhaps we'll want to consider in the future.
Okay, thank you. Richfield School Board?
He's not here.
Okay. Transportation Commission?
Just two updates. One, I don't know if I remembered it last time, but I think the, the final layout for Seventieth Street bike lanes were approved, and that's funded by, mostly by Three Rivers as a way to encourage people to go to the new trail that's along Old Cedar, so it'll connect Lyndale to Old Cedar. And there was a change from the layout from last year, so they now are able to have the continuous buffered bike lane all the way through. So it should hopefully be a really good, good, safe facility for especially kids biking to the high school and other, other things like that. The other thing is that there are some curbs down now on one, one or two blocks of Sixty-Sixth, and their, their goal is to actually complete a couple of intersections to basically just make sure the details all look good physically, especially with the cycle track and the sidewalk, before they start building everything else. So I was surprised to see curbs down this early, but it's kind of cool that to actually finish out one tiny section and see how it goes.
Am I correct, they're not putting sidewalks and bike track on the north side until next year?
I believe they're going to do it for that one test block, but I don't think in general they won't.
Okay.
Yeah, and that has to do with Excel burying their power lines on a different schedule.
All right, Chamber of Commerce?
No report.
Excellent. City Planners Report?
Thanks, I have a whole bunch of calendar items for you. First of all, I'm sure that you have seen, or hopefully you have seen the social media posts about the comp plan. We're getting a lot of hits on our WikiMap. We've had over six hundred unique hits, we've had over eighty responses. We've done a couple of pop-up events, getting responses, not a ton, but responses from folks that don't tend to come to open houses. One of the consultants rode the bus for a number of hours one day, surveying folks. We went to a Loaves and Fishes event, getting some of, again, the people that don't tend to come to our open houses. The next event, we're actually going to combine a pop-up event and a more traditional open house for the folks who maybe are looking for that way to participate, who aren't looking to participate in the WikiMap, and who we haven't seen. That's going to be on May thirtieth, here at City Hall, from two PM to six-thirty PM. We're going to be trying to survey folks who are in the line for licensing. It can be a long line, you don't have a lot to do. And then also have some displays up here, and again, have that more traditional open house, or here-to-answer-questions type event. Then on June twelfth, our compliance steering committee is going to get together. Hopefully, all of those participants also have a lot of surveys and a lot of information. I know some of them have been driving people straight to the website, which is great. Others have been going out and collecting paper surveys, so we're going to collect all of that information, update them on some of the market studies that we've been doing, and next steps. So that's June twelfth. June thirteenth, there is a recognition event for the boards and commissions. You're all invited to that, you should have gotten an invite by now. That's at six PM here in the municipal center plaza. There'll be snacks, the council will thank you for your service, that type of thing. There is a study session on June twentieth, I believe. I'd have to look up the time again, I'm sorry I didn't bring it, but I sent you an email about that. And then the next regular meeting on June twenty-sixth. So you have a busy, a full calendar of planning commission events.
Excellent.
I just had a quick question.
Yes.
When is the, kind of the public comment period closing in the interactive map? When are you guys closing that down?
Right, so there's been some debate about that. The traffic is slowing, and so we're going to try to compile, compile everything that's there and have a...
And so, we're going to try to compile, compile everything that's there and have a summary for our Steering Committee on the 12th. The question now is, do we modify that with some follow-up questions? Do we start over, do we just leave it open and try, and hope people are still coming? So we're still monitoring that, we're not sure. We'll be taking public comment through this entire process, it's just the questions will be modified. But for now, I would plan on that closing, just to be safe, the middle to end of next week.
Sorry, can I just clarify the, the work session? I, the email from you was June 19th, did you say June 20th?
Sorry, it might be the 19th.
So it is, it is on the Monday?
Yes, it's the Monday, yes, it's before the HRA meeting, yeah.
Thank you.
So moved? Sorry, I moved for adjournment.
There you go, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned, thank you.